Hello, I'm Jim Shields, your town moderator. And I'd like to welcome you to this, the annual preview of the annual town meeting, which this year is May 18th, Monday, May 18th, at 7:00 and at the high school. And as you know from years past, we meet with the various proponents of the articles, the sponsors of the articles that you, the voters, will be asked to act upon at the town meeting and get from those proponents and sponsors a brief explanation of what it is they're going to be asking you to consider and vote upon. We have a somewhat shorter warrant this year than in prior years. There are 23 articles, at least one of which will not be acted upon and a couple of others may not be acted upon. You're going to be asked to approve a budget, which is according to the recommendations of the appropriations committee, approximately $54 million. There are no zoning issues from the planning board this year. And for the first time, there are, you'll be asked to consider the use of enterprise funds for the water and sewer department. So with that, let's go through the various articles on the warrant. Article 1 is an article by which the towns committees and commissions and so forth submit their reports to the town. And all of those reports are contained in the annual town report, which is available, I believe, online, but certainly in both, I believe it's in CD form and also in printed form and may even be available the evening of the town meeting. Article 2 of the warrant addresses what many people think to be the most important part of the annual town meeting, and that is the adoption of a budget for the upcoming fiscal year. It's a process that the appropriations committee begins in the fall and works arduously towards arriving at a final budget for your consideration at the May 18 meeting. Here to explain that process and the components of the budget is Eric Madison, the chair of the appropriations committee. Eric.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We do begin the process quite early in the year. We begin generally in the fall, in September or early October, where we start calculating, if you will, our anticipated revenues for the next fiscal year. We do that by calculating the revenues available under the constraints of Prop 2.5 through taxation within town. And then as the year grows on, goes on, we also start figuring how much money we're going to get from the state through local aid. And when the governor comes out with his budget, we generally begin by using those numbers. We monitor throughout the process, the legislature and their work, both on the House side and the Senate side, to try to gauge to some degree the amount of revenue that we're going to get in local aid from the state. That process, actually, at this point, even in the fiscal year, isn't complete as the legislature has not yet acted on the budget. But I think a pretty clear picture has been painted within a few thousand dollars of what East Long Meadow can expect for revenues. And those are reflected in our budget recommendations this year. We then, in December, we start meeting with the departments. We ask them, we offer them some guidelines for the budget development. We ask them to develop their budgets on what they need for the next fiscal year's operations. They usually submit those to us in early January, not long after the holidays. In January, we start meeting with each of the departments. We go over their budget submissions with them in quite a bit of detail. We review all the expenses. Sometimes we discuss alternatives. Sometimes we look at the various options. We also look at any requests they have to increasing their services or budget or staffing or anything like that for the next fiscal year. And we weigh that against all the other priorities in town in terms of the available revenues to fund such initiatives. By generally, in March, we're getting a better sense of our total revenue picture. And we start formulating our budget recommendations that are generally complete by early April, at which time we hold our public hearing, which was held very recently for the FY16 budget. And we prepare for our annual town meeting. So it is a several-month process. This year, an awful lot of our focus was on the tax rate. The committee is concerned at the tax rate growing quite steadily in town. There's a magical number, if you will, under the constraints of the Prop 2, what we know is the Prop 2.5, the tax limitation legislation, that when we reach a $25 per thousand amount of taxation in the town, and that's exclusive of debt exclusions, like for example, a school building project, when we reach that $25 per thousand cap, we're done raising revenues. We can't go any higher than that. And so it's not a position that we want to see the town in. Since 2008, if you would remember, in 2008, nationwide, we suffered a kind of a fall on Wall Street, if you will. Many folks are referring to it as a real estate crash, in which many of us either lost value in our properties to many folks. And at the very best, the value of your property remained stagnant and didn't grow as we've become accustomed to prior to 2008. And that really is what is causing the steady increase in our tax rate since 2008. In 2008, our tax rate was $16.06 per thousand. In 2015, it's $20.72 per thousand. And in 2016, our proposed budget, an estimated tax rate would be $21.43. And you can see by this graph that we have, it illustrates the steady and continuous climb of the tax rate. Without property values increasing periodically, the tax rate absorbs all of the increases, if you will, to the town's annual budget. That's concerning to us, and we went into this year's budget formulation with an eye on the tax rate. So with that said, the tax rate was of a great concern, and we utilized that to guide us when we were developing our budget in terms of the revenues. The revenues, as I've illustrating here on the next slide, that we're recommending for this year are $38,678,000 raised by real estate and personal property taxes. I want to point out that the potential under the constraints of Prop 2.5 that we could raise by real estate and personal property taxes is some $407,000 greater than this number. We have hoped and tried to find a balance, if you will, between raising the additional revenues needed to operate the town for the next year, at the same time, not taxing to the maximum levy capacity, therefore bringing us closer to that $25 mark. Local receipts, which are made up of licenses, permits, interest we earn on money in the bank, rental fees, and in some cases, even payments in lieu of taxes from nonprofits, make up about 3.2 million in revenue. The state aid number we're using right now, we're estimating at $11,400,000 based upon the governor's budget that he submitted to the legislature. At this date, there have been some numbers that have come out of both the House and the Senate. And although they vary slightly from the governor's budget, the numbers in any additional revenues promised to East Long Meadow are minimal at best. MSBA reimbursements are money that we receive from the state. That is paying the state's share, if you will, of the bond that built Bertrand Park Middle School. That's a revenue that when that school is paid off, we'll lose, we will no longer get. And then other miscellaneous transfers account for $161,000 of the revenue this year. And that's transfers from various revolving funds, such as the community preservation fund that pays funds for projects that were approved at town meeting, previous town meetings. So the revenues that we are putting forward as a recommendation is $54,257,077, or a 2.28% increase from last year's revenues. On the uses side, in other words, the budget and of the recommendations, we're putting forth recommendations for employee benefits of $8,438,454. Now, employee benefits are items such as retirement contributions, health insurance, workers' comp, and those types of items. Our general government expenses, general government expenses are kind of a category we didn't really know what else to name it. Those are things like our trash collection. It's legal services that the town has to have, both labor attorneys and general town attorneys, as well as a reserve fund, is about $1.5 million in expenses. Debt services, which of course is paying back any of the loans or bonds that we have taken out for projects in town over the years, of $3,057,000. The education budget for our school system in town, we are recommending a budget of just over $28 million this year. Public Works budget is $3,847,000. I want to point out a couple items. The Public Works budget this year is a little different than the voters have seen in the past, and we'll get to that shortly. The Public Works budget this year will not include the water and sewer. Those will be dealt with in separate warrant articles. However, the remaining portions of the Public Works is in that number, meaning the highway division, the facilities and grounds. And also included in that number is the utilities. The DPW is in charge of the utility costs for all of the buildings in town, regardless of who occupies that building. In public safety, just over $3.5 million in recommended expenditures. Then all the other departments, which are made up of things like the assessors, the clerk's office, the collector, information technology, accounting, selectmen, library, et cetera, account for $3.6 million in the expenses. We do have this year, obviously, after the winter that we just experienced, we have a significant snow and ice deficit. A snow and ice deficit is the amount of money it costs us to clear the snow and ice throughout the winter in excess of the money that was appropriated at last year's annual town meeting to deal with snow and ice. This year, we are recommending carrying forward $225,000 of the current fiscal year's snow and ice deficit into next year. It is the only expense and only debt that we are allowed, under state statute, to carry forward into the next fiscal year. In the stabilization fund, we are recommending a $100,000 deposit. Now, the stabilization fund is our rainy day fund, if you will. It is a separate accounted fund of our savings account, where we put money each year and build our savings account for either large expenditures or unforeseen major expenditures. An example of that would be a major weather event that caused significant damage to our town or something like that. We would have the savings account there to deal with it. In capital, this year, we are recommending to raise and appropriate $919,000. Now, when you look at the capital budget this year, it will be for more than $919,000. But you'll notice that a portion of that we are recommending that comes from free cash or money in our reserves from previous fiscal years. Then we have about $873,000 in expenses and other miscellaneous expenses. And although that's a lot of money, there's just a variety of different accounts that comes out of things such as our real estate abatement account, OPEB, our other post-employment benefits, state charges, town meeting articles that we anticipate coming up that will need to be funded. Those all fall in the other miscellaneous category. So we are recommending expenditures of $54,257,077, or a 2.28% increase from last year. Again, I'd like to emphasize that it's a lesser increase than the potential allowed under Prop 2.5. Now, I mentioned earlier that the Public Works budget is going to appear a little bit differently. We are also recommending in article, I believe it's 8 and 9, this year of the warrant. If you recall, last year, we voted to create what's referred to as enterprise funds for the water and sewer funds. One enterprise fund for the water and one enterprise fund for the sewer. Under the statute that guides enterprise funds for water and sewer accounts, they have to be, those budgets, both the revenue side and the expense side, has to be approved at the town meeting in their own warrant articles and not part of the regular budget. So we are bringing forth the recommendation of about $2.5 million in revenues generated through the water use, if you will, and about $2.5 million in expenses in the water fund. And likewise, in the sewer fund, about $1.9 million in revenues and $1.9 million in expenses. But that's going to look a little bit different to the voters this year because they were accustomed to that being part of the Department of Public Works budget in the past. So all that combined, what does that include in this year's budget? There are some things that we were able to include in addition to previous fiscal years and still keep the tax rate from, to growing at a reasonable level, if you will. Some of those items are enhanced fire protection by increasing the hours of full-time coverage at the fire department. It funds a full-time health inspector. It funds 2.4 new school positions in the, obviously, in the school department. Additionally, it maintains a healthy level of reserves of roughly 6%, just over 6% in reserves, meaning the stabilization fund and free cash. The maintenance of reserves is important for many aspects, not the least of which is, it's one of the items that is looked at by the bond rating institutes out there, such as Moody's, when they set our bond rating. Our bond rating dictates the interest that we pay on any money borrowed in town. So a healthy reserve certainly helps keep that bond rating low and those interest rates low. Additionally, the Department of Revenue recommends anywhere from a 6% to 9% maintenance of reserves for the just-in-case, if you will, and to be able to deal with tight budget years when they do occur. It uses no free cash to balance any of the annual costs in this year budget. That's been a goal of the appropriations committee. We reached that goal last year. We're building on it this year to start including capital expenses out of the normal, as part of the normal budget process. And again, it's using none of the free cash for any of the annual costs. We do pay down the snow and ice deficit in one year, doing this rather than carrying it through into additional fiscal years. And we continue to contribute to the town's other post-employment benefits, the liabilities which are calculated in the millions for our community. And we really need to start addressing that at some point in the future. And we started last year by putting $50,000 into an account, which frankly is a drop in the bucket when you look at the liabilities. But we're continuing that this year with another $50,000 into the OPEB liability fund. That's it.
Well, thank you very much to you and your committee. And I would add to what Eric said is the, if you wish to have the detail of the various line items in the budget, they are included in the warrant. They're attached, I believe, as Exhibit A, where all of the expenditures that are being sought for approval are broken down line by line. And we will be going through each of those lines at the town meeting for your affirmative or negative vote. By far, the biggest component of the town's budget is that portion of the budget dedicated to our educational system and the schools. And here to explain the budget from the school's perspective is our superintendent of schools and the chairman of the school committee, Rich Richero and Gordon Smith. Gentlemen, welcome. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for having us. We always enjoy the opportunity to meet with you before a town meeting and share some of our thoughts around our budget. As we begin any budget development process each year, one of the core pieces that we look at is that we continue our mission for all our students as they go through our grades to make sure that they're prepared as they graduate to contribute to an increasingly global community. That's at the heart of any budget development.
And the school committee feels that a school system's budget is the most important factor to impact every student's success. And we do that while allowing the district to meet its goals for all its students.
So we've always appreciated, and we've said this at the town budget hearing, but the incredible support and value that the town of East Long Meadow places on education. You certainly can feel that anytime you're in our schools or throughout the community. That's impressive and certainly something that we're very thankful for. Each year, and certainly this year, the school committee works really closely with our appropriations committee, usually from December on, when they're developing the budget. And they're looking at two things. They want to meet student needs. That's the most crucial area on which we need to focus, while also being fiscally responsible. So as we approach town meeting this year, we think we're in a really good position where the appropriations committee, and we agree, they're recommending a 2.1% increase to the school department's budget for the next fiscal year. And that should allow us not only to bring programs back at their current status and current strength and support for students, but also allow us to expand in key critical areas.
Well, thank you. And I would remind our viewers that the school committee made a more expanded presentation of some of the particulars of their budget at the public hearing that the appropriations committee held at the high school a couple of weeks ago. And that presentation in its entirety can be viewed on the town's LCAT YouTube channel. And I would encourage all of you to view that to see not only the school committee's input, but the appropriation committee chair, Eric Madison, his explanation of how the budget was developed for this coming fiscal year. Article 3 is the capital budget for the town. Capital budget relates to assets that have a longer useful life than stuff that gets used up in one year or that costs more than $20,000. And here to explain how the capital budget was developed and what the budget will be like is the chair of that committee, Rocco Carabatta. Rocco.
Good evening. Mr. Shields said, I am the chairman of the capital planning committee. And tonight, I will be showing you the recommendations for the FY2016 budget. The capital planning committee is made up of a group of people that volunteer their time to evaluate all the capital requests of $20,000 or more with a minimum of three-year life. We begin our meetings in September and have weekly meetings of all the capital projects until all the capital projects are evaluated and reviewed with each department and boards. We then make our recommendations to the appropriations committee for the inclusion in the town budget. Members include four members appointed by the moderator and the board of selectmen, one being a town employee, two members from the appropriations committee, a recording secretary. Members for the FY16 committee are myself as chairman, Ryan Quimby as co-chairman and town employee, Steve Loyack is appointed, Sam Pitsonelli, an appropriation committee member, Conrad Wispick is appointed, Thomas O'Connor is appointed, Pauline Seletti is our recording secretary. This year, we reviewed 34 capital projects totaling $7,381,492. Our objective this year, to evaluate each project's urgency, need, and benefit to the community. Prioritize all the projects submitted based upon the outcome of the evaluation with the highest priority assigned to number one. Assign available funds to the highest priority. We work with all the departments to close completed projects, availing unspent funds for the projects. We work with appropriations committee to establish a budget for the new spending. Recommended projects and funding at the annual town meeting. After an extensive review of the proposed project, each one is placed in one of the, one or more of the following categories: public safety, government mandate, capital infrastructure maintenance, improved operations, energy efficiency, quality of life, and new This year, we emphasized on maintaining current infrastructure programs and assets. Our priorities were based on the need, urgency, and the benefit. The highest priority projects match the available appropriate funds sources. Typical funding sources are the general fund, fund raised from taxation, including debt payments. The water revenue fund, generated from residents paying the water bill. The sewer enterprise fund, I'm sorry, the sewer enterprise fund, generated from resident revenue paying from the sewer bills. We also have money returned from closed capital projects. These are projects that were approved in the past and had money that was not spent that can be reapplied to other capital projects. We also use free cash. That's unexpendited general funds from previous fiscal years. Special accounts, revenue raised from specific purposes used only to support those purposes. And one of the examples is LCAT. LCAT has a revolving fund that is self-supporting. Our recommended project for FY16 from the general fund are the school department, replacement of school buses at $255,000, a hot water tank at the high school for $25,000, Consolidating A80-kilowatt generator for $45,000, the police department, which is an annual thing. We've tried to keep up to date with all the cruisers. This year, we're recommending two new police cruisers at $76,022. The information technology, which includes the school and all the town government, that's all the computers and everything that we use throughout the town, at $368,179. Further recommendations from the public works department and maintenance is our annual sidewalk fund of $75,000. Summers Road landfill, which is $92,450. This is mandated. We have to start filling the landfill at Summers Road. Replacement of truck 77. This is a request from the DPW. That's an old truck. It needs to be replaced at $44,293. Replacement of truck 78. Here again, we're trying to maintain the infrastructure of the town, and that's at 37,574. The new switchgear at the town hall is $30,000, and that's up to grade the electrical facilities at the town hall. Renovations to the town hall, which was explained by the DPW, at $144,000. Other recommended projects for FY16 is the Water Enterprise Fund, and that's to replace a water main on John Street at $188,500. The Sewer Enterprise Fund, that's infiltration projects. And what that is, is that the DPW inspects sewer lines for leakage so that we don't have to pay the city of Springfield for unnecessary water that's leaking in our sewer system. And that's at $100,000. We have a cable access revolving fund, and that's at $40,000. Recommended funded for sourcing. We have from the general fund, we're recommending $919,314 to be raised and appropriated, $253,204 from free cash, from the Water Enterprise Fund, $188,500, from the Sewer Enterprise Fund, $100,000, from the LCAT revolving fund, $40,000. So our general fund projects total So our general fund projects total, as our recommendation, $1,172,518. From the water enterprise fund, $188,500, from the sewer enterprise fund, $100,000, and from the Elcat revolving fund, $40,000. So our total recommendation this year to the town of East Long Meadow is $1,501,18.
Thank you very much, Rocco. As is clear from the presentations that both Eric Madison and Rocco Carabatta made, the budgets reflect difficult choices because we have limited funds and caps on, state law caps on how much we can raise, and a lot of potential uses for those funds. The meetings of the appropriations committee and the capital planning committee are open to the public, they're all posted, and as both gentlemen have indicated, they start meeting in the fall. And I would encourage any voter to attend those meetings as frequently as possible so you can understand the process and have input in the process. Because again, significant quality-of-life issues are made by the adoption of the budget, how much we allocate to public safety versus education versus IT in town and other important components of the town, and those are typically reflected in the budget. And I would like to again thank both, the chairs of both the appropriations and the capital planning committees for the work that they and their committees have done over the past year. As is the case in just about every year, many of the articles on the warrant are sponsored by the board of selectmen, and we'll go through them now. Articles four through six are sponsored by the selectmen. And here to explain what those articles seek to accomplish is a member of the board, Angela Thorpe.
Thank you, Jim. Well, Article four is basically with regards to the stabilization fund, and we're asking for $100,000 to be transferred. I believe it is the recommendation of the appropriations committee for us to keep it at a certain level, and this is to build it up. It's a rainy day fund, and the components are available should we need them.
Let me add into the introductions, I should have introduced to Russ Denver, a member of the appropriations committee, who is here to answer any questions that I or Angela may have on the committee's recommendations or provide further explanation. And Russ, I believe the committee has attempted to fund the, or recommended funding the stabilization fund for a number of years.
Correct. And the stabilization fund, along with the free cash, certified free cash, is a certain amount of reserves that the town has set aside for rainy day issues. And it's the guidance from the Massachusetts Department of Revenue that the town maintained between 5% and 8% into reserves. So a portion each year of appropriated monies will go into the stabilization to make sure that we stay within that 5% to 8% guideline from the Department of Revenue.
And under state law, it takes a two-thirds vote to put money into the stabilization fund account and also to take it out. So when we reach Article four, that will require a two-thirds vote instead of a majority vote. Article five, Angie?
Well, Article five is a new mandate, a recent mandate by this date, to have monies in our coffers for our retiree benefits. Last year, we did place some money into that account, and this year, they're asking that we put $50,000 into that account. It's going to take us some time to be in compliance by the year 2025. It's going to take some, quite a few bit of funds and transfers to be done. And so we have just recently taken it by the bull by the horns and started putting money aside. And so this is a request so that, to get us closer to being in compliance by the year 2025.
A number of years ago, the town adopted a state statute which allowed the town to create a, what's called an other post-employment benefit trust fund. So there's a trust fund established, maintained by the town, and the town has the ability to appropriate monies to go into the trust fund that can only be used to pay retiree, town retiree health insurance cost into the future. The town has approximate liability of almost $17 million for current and future retiree health costs. So it is the plan of the appropriations and in conjunction with the board of selectmen to appropriate money each year into that trust fund. And only the board of selectmen will be able to decide when those monies are released to be able to pay future claims for retirees.
I think it's a great idea that we do it ahead of time as opposed to waiting until 2025 and have it mandated, and then we'll really get smacked.
And just to be clear, this is, these funds are only used for the health insurance component, not for pensions or other direct payments?
Correct. It's only for retiree health insurance costs.
Yep. Fine. Thank you. Article six?
Article six is for prior year invoices that came in a little bit too late to close out with the last fiscal year. And so this is a housekeeping article, and it's to transfer $3,500. And we had some bills, from my understanding, is that we had some invoices that came in from the clerk's office that didn't just make it. We run into this problem when invoices come in in late June, and they don't just make, they don't make it by the June 30th for being processed. So we come back and ask for them to be processed now.
Okay. Thank you. Articles seven, eight, and nine on this year's warrant have been sponsored by the board of public works. And here to explain those articles is John Mayberry. John?
Thank you. So we'll get right into Article seven, which is chapter 90. Chapter 90 should be pretty familiar to most people. Every year, we have a chapter 90, which is our streets. We get reimbursed by the state based on the miles of streets that we have in town, and we submit to the town when we add streets. And good news for this year is that the legislature, the governor, and team have come up with some good money for us to do the repairs. It is a year in which we obviously need those repairs. We had a pretty harsh winter. I know most people have seen quite a bit of road damage, potholes, cracks, et cetera. But the good news is we do have some good reimbursements through the chapter 90. So I'm just going to explain the number that we get to, which is our FY 15 number we would usually have to present was around $581,000. And as a result of another $100 million being allocated to the towns, that number was actually increased to $872,628. And then with all the pothole damage that occurred this year, there was a rap put in place which gave us another $87,263, which is an additional good piece of information for us to have. But then on top of that, the governor expedited FY 16 numbers, for which we normally wouldn't have at this time to bring to town meeting. But with that all said and done, this year's chapter 90, Article seven, will be for $1,548,333. So that's a very significant number that can get us to a place where we think we can get our East Long Meadow streets back to where we really expect them to be. We also did carry forward an additional $500,000 from last year. So we have near $2 million to spend in chapter 90. So I know as you travel on some of the streets in town, it might not look like the good East Long Meadow roads that we've been accustomed to, but we're already out there now because we were given authorization to move forward right away, making some repairs to some of the streets. And additionally, the streets that are going to be paved this year are already out to bid and being prepared. So you'll see a lot of good activity this summer. We anticipate probably utilizing 50% of that funding where you'll see it this summer, and then move into the balance of that to continue to take care of the streets for our chapter 90. So this is just an article we need to approve so that we can go ahead and take the state funds and utilize those. Reference Article eight and nine. Article eight is for the water enterprise fund that Eric spoke to when he was talking about Article two and the change in the DPW budget and how the water enterprise fund and sewer enterprise fund are working. We are going to have approximately $2.5 million in revenues from our water, and we are going to have expenses that match to $2.577,139. And it's all outlaid in the warrant article so you can see the numbers. The bottom line is, it was something that we worked through over the past two or three years, changing the way we were actually doing our water revenues from the water usage in town and how we were doing our accounting. It was recommended, and we did pass last year, recommended by the auditor to go to this enterprise fund. All town boards and departments have worked together to collectively come up with the right solution for the water enterprise fund. And Article nine takes us into the sewer enterprise fund, which is basically the same mechanism. It's for the sewer fees that we collect, and that number is $1.9 million in expenses, $1.9 million in receipts, all spelled out on how it's going to happen in terms of where the money comes from and how the money gets expended. And again, all worked out between the departments, the accounting, and now the auditor is going to be quite pleased that we were able to work through this process. The water and sewer enterprise funds are very commonly used throughout other communities. It just took East Long Meadow a little bit to adopt and come to this point. So our articles are, from the DPW, are pretty straightforward this year, and we hope to have everybody approve them.
Thank you. And as John and Eric have both said, the adoption of the budget component for the water and sewer will be slightly different, will be substantially different from prior years. The numbers are essentially the same, it's just that they are separately voted upon as opposed to being a component of the general budget in Article two. Article 10 is a citizen's petition designed to freeze the tax rates of people 70 years of age and older. Quite frankly, I'm not sure that, well, actually, I am sure that this is not something that the town meeting, as powerful as the town meeting may be, its powers do not extend to classification of tax categories such as this. I'll be speaking with the petitioner in advance of the town meeting to discuss how this should be handled on the town meeting floor. Article 11 on the warrant has been sponsored by the board of assessors, and it has to do with relisting personal property. And that's not something that many of us normally deal with in terms of personal property taxes. So here to explain Article 11 is Chris Saulnier from the board of assessors.
Thank you, Jim. The board of assessors is submitting this article requesting an appropriation of $10,000 in order to comply with the Commonwealth's Bureau of Assessment directive to us, to our office, to relist and recollect personal property. And this project is to be completed by 2017. Personal property is a tax levied upon such things in a business, business equipment, sometimes horses are considered personal property if they have a distinct value, and small mom-and-pop operations. We have about 650 accounts in the town, and we have concluded about 410 are active accounts, but the town adopted a few years ago a limit. So if the personal property has a value of $1,500 or less, we do not tax it, it is tax exempt. But 1,500, over $1,500 and up is taxed. And we have about 250 accounts that are, have substantial value, and they comprise about $1,131,000 of our tax levy. So it's a significant collection of tax. And when we had our values certified this past fiscal year, the chief of the bureau always issues directives to our offices what we have to do within the next couple of years. And this was part of the package. So in essence, we have to go out, re-inspect these properties, and revalue them, relist them, determine inventories for different businesses. And I'm happy to say that the appropriations committee has recommended this article because it does have a significant impact.
So is this sort of similar to, I know with the real estate taxes, the properties get revalued periodically because of, I think, a state law?
Yes.
But you're saying with the personal property taxes, that's basically done at the directive of the Department of Revenue?
That's correct. And we haven't had to do this for a great number of years. So evidently, in looking at the history and their auditing process, they've decided this needs to be done.
Great. Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
The next group of articles sponsored by the board of selectmen are articles 12 through 15. And once again, Angela Thorpe and Russ Denver will explain what is being asked.
Thank you again, Jim. What has happened is, Elcat did this very nice studio, and they had some money, monies that were left over. So they're just primarily asking them to be placed back into their revolving fund.
Okay.
And anything you want to add?
Now, just that, just so people should realize that Elcat is really funded through costs associated with their cost to the cable company each and every month. It's a negotiated contract that the board of selectmen has with Charter Cable, so that monies come back for public access television, which is our Elcat.
And it's, if you want to look on your bill, it's called, those little things called access fee. Those funds are directed towards us, and we have it in a revolving fund, and Don Mackey's able to put on the wonderful programming that we see today, and our sports programming, and also some educational pieces.
Great.
Article 13 is the same. There was still money from the Elcat facilities improvement project, and so that'll go back into the fund as well.
And in those funds, the nature of that particular revolving fund is that all of the funds within that fund, all the monies within that fund, are limited in use for Elcat purposes?
Just Elcat purposes, yes. And that's how it's stated in the contract as well. And so I think, I'm going to give a little plug for Don Mackey. I think he's a nice watcher of the facility and also over the money. And we have committees that are working diligently along with him, and I think they are continuing to do great things, and I look for more from them. With regards to Article 14, those are our revolving funds.
I will say we're doing things a little differently this year with the revolving funds.
Yeah, I did notice that myself.
For the benefit of the voters, normally, a separate vote, in the past, a separate vote has been taken on each of the contributions to the revolving funds. They tend to be pretty non-controversial, and so through the efforts of our town accountant, Sarah Menard, we are trying a new approach this year and collectively voting. I'll go through each of the components so we can do the same process that we do with the main budget. If somebody wants to discuss any particular one of the appropriated, requested appropriations or transfers, we can do a hold on that one and then come back to it afterwards. But otherwise, we'll just take one vote for all of the revolving funds, which will make the meeting a tiny bit more efficient. So with that, do you want to discuss those funds?
Well, sure. The ones that are involved are the Elcat, which is the local access television, and again, that comes from the PEG fees, and they're setting theirs up for $180,000. There's the solid waste disposal, and they're setting theirs up for $75,000. Council of Aging, just so you know, they're, going back a little bit, I do apologize, the solid waste disposal, their revenue source comes from the selling of trash bags and the recycling materials. And then Council of Aging, their money source comes from donations, memorials, federal grants, and state grants. Now, they are setting up their revolving fund for $100,000. And then the Public Library, and their source of income comes from borrowers of the library, you know, those overdue fines. Hopefully, we don't have too many of them, but they're putting them to good use.
Well, if we do have them, maybe they're from Long Meadow.
Well, you know, it could be. And so they're setting it up for $15,000.
And once again, those dollars can only be used for library materials as well.
Right. Exactly. Exactly. And so there's a specific purpose for these funds, and we set it up to have a vehicle so that the monies can come out and they're not mingling with the general fund. And so this way, they're able to go ahead and access that without, it's still, there's still a paper trail, but they're able to have those separate from our general fund. Of course, if the people vote for that, that's what we'll do. Article 15 is the parade money. We love a parade, and I know we differ on this one.
The committee differs.
The committee does. The committee does. It's to have our, we're well-known for our great parade that we put forth every Fourth of July, and so this funding would... And so this funding would, not for this July, but for the next fiscal year. It's not this year, but the next fiscal year, and we recommended it for it to go through.
The Appropriations Committee did not recommend the expenditure of that.
That's a tough place to be.
Yeah.
Just kidding.
No, the thought process behind the committee's recommendation is that there are many other facets of the quality of life that we believe those funds could be used for. You know, additional police, additional fire, you know, services like that. And we just feel that while those needs still have not been met, that those dollars would be better spent trying to meet those needs rather than the parade.
Okay. I respect that.
Russ's point follows the comment I made when we discussed the overall budget in Articles two and three, that the budget and the warrant articles that deal with the expenditure of funds really reflect the desires of the town as to where the limited money that we have, where should it be spent? And there are difficult choices that need to be made and difficult recommendations on the part of the Appropriations Committee as these matters are discussed by that committee. I would again urge citizens to attend the meetings of the Appropriations Committee and the Capital Planning Committee. They're all open to the public. They are, that's where these decisions get made. I mean, the ultimate decision on all of these is obviously made by you, the voters, but the recommendations of the committee and the budget that the committee presents all reflect what they understand to be and believe to be in the best interests of the town. And if there are a number of town residents who feel otherwise, well, there's opportunity to have that input in the process, and hopefully, the budget will be reflective of what the majority of the people in the town want to spend the town's money on in terms of the difficult choices between education and public safety and recreation, and, as you know, a whole host of matters. Articles sixteen through nineteen on the warrant have been sponsored by the Community Preservation Committee. And here to explain what those articles seek to accomplish for the town is George Kingston.
I'm going to talk about Articles sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. These are all articles sponsored by the Community Preservation Committee. The Community Preservation Fund is funded by the 1% surcharge on property taxes plus a match from the state. And those are the funds that are being appropriated here. These funds are restricted in their use to open space, outdoor recreation, affordable housing, and historical preservation. Article sixteen is our standard housekeeping article that assigns the revenue that we get for the fund to the different parts, different funds for each of those reserves, historical resources, community housing, open space, and the rest into the undesignated reserve. There is also an appropriation to fund, to transfer $4,500 from the general fund, General Unreserved Fund, to the Town General Fund for the bond anticipation note on the brown property, and $67,305 for the bond payment on the brown property, because those were originally paid incorrectly out of the general fund. Article seventeen is also a housekeeping article to rebalance the various reserves by transferring funds within, from one fund to the other within the Community Preservation Fund overall, and also to make the same payments for the bond anticipation note and the bond for the fiscal year 2015. Article eighteen is actually an expenditure article. We're asking for $25,000 from the Community Preservation Historic Preservation Fund Reserve to digitize town records. The town records right now are mostly kept in paper copy in the basement of Town Hall and elsewhere around Town Hall. They are not secure, and they're very, very difficult to reference. If someone wants a record, like a birth certificate from the 1950s, the town clerk has to have somebody go down to the basement and dig through the boxes to find it. By digitizing, the records will be able to, first of all, make sure they're preserved, and second of all, to make them much more accessible to town officials, town clerk, and also to town residents. Article nineteen is an appropriation to see if the town will expend a sum not to exceed $25,000 from the legally designated, undesignated reserve to carry out an engineering study and a plan to create playing fields at Heritage Park. The Recreation Department wants to see if they can put more playing fields up the hill behind the existing soccer field in Heritage Park, an area that is currently very much underutilized. However, they don't know if they're going to be able to do it because they don't know what the subsurface conditions are, whether they're going to run into high-water tables or ledge. And so they want to do an engineering study to find out whether or not fields are feasible up there. This is just a study. This will not pay for the fields, and is not a commitment by the Recreation Commission to actually put the fields in at a specific date. Thank you.
Articles twenty through twenty-two are also sponsored by the Board of Selectmen, and once again, Angie Thorpe and Russ Denver.
Okay. Article twenty, at our recent Board of Selectmen meeting, we had taken a vote, which makes this article a no-action article.
And just for the benefit of the voters, Article twenty was intended to deal with part-time employees' health insurance, correct?
Well, the elected officials' part-time. Because originally, I did want it to expand to part-time across the board, and the board felt that it would only be, that it was best just to do the elected officials. However, with more information, we did end up taking a vote, and so it is not, this has to do with health insurance for elected officials, and they are part-time. So now, as it stands now, effective as of June 30th, there will be no health insurance available, and this is just health insurance, dental and whatever else will be available, but there will be no health insurance available for elected officials.
So unlikely, then, that any action will be taken on?
There is no action that needs to be taken on that article. It was intended to ask the voters to increase the amount of money that the participants in the health insurance were paying from a 30% to 100%. With more information, we found out that our concern, and I heard it loud and clear from the Appropriations, and forgive, correct me if I misspeak, is that we were, there was a, we were vulnerable as a town because of the amount of elected officials that we had and the amount that were taking advantage of the insurance. Should everyone have taken advantage of it, it would have caused quite a financial quandary for the town of East Long Meadow. So to eliminate that possibility, health insurance for elected officials has been eliminated. With that said, people who are currently on the health insurance, effective as of June 30th, they would be eligible for 100, to pay 100% for a Cobra, for Cobra, which is what this was trying to do, for 18 months. So it won't be as if they would be cut off completely, and at least 18 months that they would have Cobra available to them at 100%. And so now that, you know, it's what was best for the town. And it was not an easy decision. I will make high statements on that. I don't know if you need to add anything to that.
No, I just want to acknowledge the hard work from the Board of Selectmen. In December, the Appropriations made a number of financial recommendations for the Board of Selectmen to consider, and this was one, because the potential liability if every part-time elected official participated in the health insurance, it would have been in excess of $300,000, which would have put a big hole in the next fiscal year budget. And so we asked the board to consider options, and you did, and so you're to be complimented on that.
We tried a whole bunch of options. And the other thing is, if we had passed this, it would have had to have been approved by our legislative branch, and from my understanding, it could be sent to committee, which could have left us that liability out there, and we would have been vulnerable. So with...
When you say the legislative branch, you mean the state legislative branch?
Yes.
Because the town meeting is the town's legislative branch.
Oh, yeah, yeah. No, I meant the state.
Right, just for clarity.
And so, understanding the predicament that we're in, and just to make sure that the town was in a good place, that the decision was made to discontinue coverage. So Article twenty, there would be no action.
Article twenty-one, speaking of revenue, is another concept that was discussed by the Appropriations Committee and then with the Board of Selectmen, and why don't you explain, this has to do with the meals tax?
The meals tax. It's an opportunity for people who are dining out in our town to pay a meals tax, and what happens, we have, I think the estimate is that it would be $200,000 that would come into our town, and we need the revenue. So we recommended that that go through. I don't know if you want to add anything to that.
Yeah, another recommendation from the Appropriations Committee to have the board consider, it does require approval at town meeting from the voters, and to put it into some perspective, on a $100 bill at a local restaurant, the additional tax would be 75 cents.
Seventy-five cents.
And so for the first fiscal year from the town, from July 1 through June 30, we would take in approximately $150,000, because there's a calendar year quarter, a lag on it. So for the first year, the estimated additional revenue would be $150,000, which would go into the general fund.
Okay.
And then the next fiscal year would be in excess of $200,000, which is, you know, another way to raise additional revenue besides real estate taxes.
Real estate taxes.
Well, plus, that revenue is generated from beyond East Long Meadow. I mean, it's not solely East Long Meadow residents.
Exactly.
And the revenue, it's surprising to me that 75 cents on a $100 bill can add up to 200,000 bucks in a year.
Just that quickly.
It's a nice benefit.
And if East Long Meadow adopts this, we're really kind of in unison with many other local communities that surround East Long Meadow that have adopted this as well.
Exactly.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Article twenty-two?
Article twenty-two is our senior work-off program. It's going to the town to increase the amount of hours to 125 hours. This program allows our seniors to come in, we have department heads that identify need, and then we have seniors who have that particular skill set, and so they can work, and then that money comes off of their tax bill.
So they volunteer for the work, but the benefit they get in return is a reduction in the amount of taxes that they have to pay.
Exactly.
And there is currently a limit on the number of hours, and that limit is, the request is to increase that to 125.
Exactly, exactly.
Sure. And it's been recommended by the Appropriations, and the numbers were generated by the Board of Assessors, and everyone seems to be in agreeance with this.
Give you another opportunity, because we want our seniors to stay, and this gives them an opportunity to work down some of the taxes. And we're also trying to keep our taxes down a little lower. So just to go back to the, with regards to the insurance, that'll be $72,000 that will be saved by eliminating the insurance. So just some opportunities to save some money and then give some money out.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. My pleasure.
Finally, Article twenty-three is another citizen's petition, this one also having to do with health insurance for elected officials. And I am not certain that any action would need to be taken based on what has been represented as being the actions of the Board of Selectmen on this very point. But secondly, and equally importantly, as I interpret the article, it seeks to compel the Board of Selectmen to amend their regulations to do something. And once again, this is not a town meeting power. The town meeting is the legislative body. The Board of Selectmen is the town's executive body, and the legislative body can't tell the executive body what to do. I'd like to thank you for watching this presentation of the annual town meeting preview. A couple of things I would bring to your attention. The Appropriations Committee held a public hearing on the proposed budget. You can see a recording of that presentation on the town's, LCAT's YouTube page, on which this particular broadcast will also be located. And also for your consideration, as you know, at the recent election, the town approved the establishment of a charter commission, which will be charged with, which is charged, with the process of evaluating our current form of town government and making recommendations, if any, as to how, what changes might be considered appropriate by that commission. That process will take a period of time, a number of months. A representative of the charter commission will be speaking briefly at the town meeting, and they will be holding a public hearing on, I believe it's May 27, at the Council on Aging Media Room, to which you're all invited to attend to learn more about the process, offer your input. And I do encourage you, as I always do, to show up for the annual town meeting. It is our tremendously, tremendous opportunity for you, the voter, to have a meaningful vote in how this town is governed. The town meeting is the town's legislative body, and the things that are done there are very important to the quality of life and the enjoyment within the town of East Long Meadow. So I look forward to seeing you Monday, May 18, at 7 o'clock. Thank you.